Okay, so it is 6:00 PM, July 29, 2020, and we are convening a special meeting of the Columbia Heights Board of Education. Mr. Mucio, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Eder.
Here.
Mrs. Schuker.
Here.
Mr. Suchaki.
Here.
Mr. Naaman.
Here.
Mr. Dobbins.
Here. Five present, none absent. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to today's Board of Education meeting. The Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 197 in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. That bill grants permissive authority to defined state and local public bodies to hold public meetings by way of teleconference or video conference until December 1st, 2020, or during the period of the COVID-19 emergency, whichever occurs first. In order to hold such meetings, the public body must meet the qualifications established in the bill related to providing adequate public notice, methods of public participation, and distribution of information and materials. The board believes that it satisfied all of HB 197's criteria to hold today's meeting by teleconference or video conference. A copy of the board meeting agreement is available to review on our school district's website. Would you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have a motion for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Naaman moves.
Second.
Mr. Suchaki, seconds. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Dobbins, I would just ask that when we get to my portion of the agenda, that we pull the back-to-school plan off the consent agenda so we can talk about that and present that separately, so we can approve the rest of those items, and then we'll talk about the back-to-school plan by itself.
And that would be items 12G and 12H in your consent agenda?
I'd like to see it goes off.
It's 11G and H.
And the back-to-school plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, 11G and H. I apologize. Yeah, items 11G and 11H. We will pull off consent agenda for superintendent's business. Is there any other discussion on the agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Mucio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder. Mrs. Eder. Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Comments from the public. The board values and encourages public comment on education issues and is now asking the public to email comments that hit might have otherwise provided during the public comments portion of this meeting to the following email address: info@cuyhts.org. The board will strive to respond to all comments received as promptly as possible. And with that, we're at item number four, and that's the treasurer's business. Mr. Mucio.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbins. I'll try to go through these relatively quickly. Item 4A, approval of purchase orders over 5,000. Motion to approve purchase orders over 5,000 as found in attachment T1. Item 4B, motion to approve new vendors to the school district for W9's attached as found in attachment T2. 4C, motion to authorize the treasurer to file with the auditor state's office a request for an extension to December 31, 2020, of the annual GAAP financial statements for fiscal year 2020 due to the extenuating circumstances of another possible lockdown due to COVID-19 public health crisis as found in attachment T3. Unless an extension has been approved by the auditor state, entities filing on a GAAP basis have 150 days following the end of their fiscal year to submit their financial statements to the auditor state. 4D, motion to approve the following vending certificate pursuant to Section 5705.41 of the Ohio Revised Code is hereby certified that both at the time of the making of this contract or order and at the date of the execution of this certificate, the amount required to pay this contract or order has been appropriated for the purpose of this contract or order as in the treasury or in process of collection, the credit of the fund free from any previous encumbrance. I ask for motions 4A through B for approval.
So moved.
Mr. Suchaki, second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple things on 4A. I'll open the lead sheet here. These are the purchase orders for approval over 5,000. Nothing out of the ordinary too much for tonight. We have number one Dairyman's, that's milk for our lunches. That's $10,000 blanket purchase order. Number two, Senate Partners, that's going to be for the cafeteria menus. That's a $6,000 blanket purchase order for the year. Number three is BSN Sports, that's face masks for the students. This is for the COVID-19 public health crisis. It's $5,700 some dollars. We're having that expense be paid from the general fund at this point in time. However, we're going to move that to the CARES Act funds once the grant's formally been approved. Number four is for our bus number one Major Rust Repair, that's $9,225. Number five is NeoNet Services from the general fund, $58,000. Number six is Amazon. Number seven is Midview Schools. We're going to be partnering with them, purchasing portable desk dividers. Again, this is for the COVID-19 public health crisis. B is just... I'm sorry?
Thank you, Mr. Mucio. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh. Yeah, B is just approval of new vendors. We just have two tonight. One is for the online software distance learning, the other is for the desk dividers with Midview Schools. Number, excuse me, 4C is the third item that we have. This is just a proactive request for extension for our financial statements. Typically, they have to be filed 150 days after the close of our fiscal year, which is 6/30. But due to the public health crisis and just the unknown of another lockdown, I thought it was wise to be proactive and ask the auditor state's office for an extension to December 31, 2020. And the last item tonight is the approval of vending now certificate. This is for $16,454 to the ESC of Northeast Ohio for an outplace tuition to Peprenis. When we closed the fiscal year 6/30, we closed that super blanket purchase order for this item. The bill came in after the fact, so we're just approving this for that reason. And that's all I have. Was there any questions?
I was just going to ask you about the portable desk dividers. Is that also a cost that we might be able to be reimbursed through the CARES Act?
Yes, correct. Let me pull this up. Yeah. So for the account description, yes, I also have this down here that we will move this expense to the CARES Act fund once the grant's approved by ODE. And actually, the grant just got approved by ODE, I want to say about two hours ago formally. So yes, I will move both those expenses to the general fund over to the CARES Act fund, which is Fund 507.
That price to Midview Schools is about 50% less than some of the other prices that have been quoted to us. So we're fortunate that I kind of was talking with our superintendent, and he mentioned it. And then also, actually, the price, because we added on, another school district added on to their order, the price came down an additional $2 per unit with the additional order. So that's going to work out well for us, we believe.
And just to show a picture of what those desk dividers look like, I'll bring it up real quick. I'll blow this up a little bit. So this is what we're talking about for the desk dividers and what they would look like.
Very good. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Mucio?
No.
Okay. Well, then may I have a motion for approval of the treasure's consent agenda?
We've already done the motions, I think.
Okay, I apologize. Then let's go to a vote, then. Mr. Mucio.
Yep, Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder.
It showed that she left, she might be having some technical difficulties.
Okay, we'll skip her at the moment. Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 4-0. We hope Ms. Eder can join us quickly.
And I just had one discussion comment point for tonight. Just wanted to say that for our state software redesign, we have officially gone live. So after dual processing for payrolls between both systems, we completed our first official redesign payroll successfully Friday, July 3. So all this is, we all remember, we were converting our financial software from the old state software to new state software we designed, and we have officially done that. So payroll, we ran our first payroll successfully Friday, July 3 in the new system. Friday, July 10, we successfully closed fiscal year 2020 in both the old system and the new system. And then going forward from Friday, July 10, we are in fiscal year 2021, and we are only using the new system, the state software we designed. And I just want to thank and give praise to Yelixa Rodriguez and Kathy Martin in the treasurer's office. They were outstanding, and they were the point people through this entire software conversion. I didn't do anything. It was all the two of them, and they did an outstanding job, as well as NeoNet, Phil Ingersoll, the entire NeoNet team, they were outstanding as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Hello, everyone. I lost internet connection for a while there. Did I miss a vote?
Yes, the motion passed 4-0. I'm not sure if we need to revote it. It would be a legally binding vote, I believe.
That's okay. I don't know what happened. I lost internet, and I guess now I'm back, if you see and hear me. And I see it for you.
Very good. So we finished the treasurer's business, and we're moving on to superintendent's business?
Yes. Man, I'm going to need you to scroll through the agenda. I can't do it from my end here.
Yep.
Superintendents, superintendent's, let me back down a little bit. General business. A, adopt revised school calendar, school district calendar for 2020-21 as attached that pushes our starting date back to Monday, August 25. B, an MOU between CHAT and the Board of Education regarding modifications through Article 15, professional staff leave absence, Section F5, unpaid leave of the negotiated agreement per the attachment. Those two motions on just business and general business.
Hey, Tom.
Yes.
Before you go further, it's Monday, the 24th.
Thank you, Lundy. Monday, the 24th.
Yeah, I thought the date was wrong, too.
I asked that those two items be approved.
Okay, are we going to do a one large consent agenda, or do you want to do it?
Let's do it by section.
Section by section. Okay, so I have a motion for approval of Item 7A and B of superintendent's business?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Schuker moves.
Second.
Mr. Naaman, seconds. Any discussion?
Any questions on either one of these items?
I'm good to go there.
Was there any consideration of starting the school year after Labor Day?
Some talk of it, but my feelings are, we've been out since the middle of March right now, and if we can get started on the 24th, that will work for us. I'll add, when we start talking about the plan a little bit, the Department of Health just came out with some other news, some more news yesterday. So when we get to the plan part of it, I'll discuss that a little bit further.
Okay, very good. If there's no further discussion, let's vote on Item 7A and B. Mr. Mucio, call the roll, please.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder. Mrs. Eder.
I think she's frozen again.
Okay, we'll skip her. Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion's passed 4-0. Item 8 of superintendent's business, staff resignations.
Motion to accept the resignation of Angelo Bertoloni as the Unified Arts Pre-K through 5 Team Leader for 2021 school year effective July 18, 2020. And motion to accept the resignation of Eric January as a long-term substitute kindergarten teacher for 2021 school year effective July 19, 2020. I ask that those two items be approved.
Okay, motions for Items 8A and 8B, please.
So moved.
Mr. Suchaki moves.
Second.
Second? Second, is there any discussion?
Just that, you know, that's, somebody panicked, they thought Mr. Bertoloni was leaving us. He's not leaving us. He's just stepping away from the team leader position. And Eric January was going to do a long-term sub for us to start the school year. He's actually found a full-time employment, so Mrs. Hodgson's working through that right now.
Very good. Thank you. Well, then let's go to a vote. Mr. Mucio.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder. Now here, we'll skip her. Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
And Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
The motion's passed 4-0. Superintendent's business, item 9.
A motion to approve the employment of George Burak, Assistant Principal, 6 through 12 Director of Pupil Personnel as exempt certified staff per contract effective August 1, 2020 through July 31, 2023 contingent upon successful completion of BCI, FBI record checks, and proper certification if applicable. And motion to approve employment of Keller Orlando as the Unified Arts Team Leader on a one-year limited supplemental contract for 2021 school year at the rate per negotiated agreement. I ask that those two items be approved.
May there be motions for approvals of Items 9A and B?
So moved.
Ms. Schuker moves. Mr. Suchaki, I'll take that as a second.
Okay.
Question?
You know, I've sent Mr. Burak's information to you for several weeks. That's in line with the rest of the county and with his contract, and then Mrs. Orlando as the Team Leader for Pre-K to 5 for the Unified Arts.
Very good. Mr. Mucio, we can proceed to a vote, then.
Mrs. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder. Skip. Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion's passed 4-0. Superintendent's business, item 10.
Approve modifications of employment of Kathy Topovich as the ESY Transportation Coordinator for the summer of 2020, not to exceed 15 hours per week unless additional weekly hours approved by her supervisor. And B, approve the, a motion to approve employment of Rebecca Renhelder as a Teacher Assistant per the adopted salary schedule, Step 5, on a one-year limited contract for 2021 school year contingent upon satisfactory completion of BCI FBI background check.
May I have motions to approve Items 10A and B of Mr. Evans' superintendent business?
So moved.
Mr. Suchaki moves. I'll second. Mr. Evans, any discussion?
No, those are pretty, you know, Kathy comes in and does some summer scheduling for us, so we want to make sure that we have enough hours to cover her time during the summer. And Rebecca is a replacement for, I believe, some of the shuffling amongst the secretarial staff and also in the library aid position, so.
Very good. Mr. Mucio, call the roll, please.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder.
Aye.
Mr. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Now we lost him.
Must be something here in Valley View.
Okay, we're skipping Mr. Naaman, then.
Okay, then the motion's passed 4-0. Item 11 for superintendent's business, and we've agreed that we're going to remove Items G and H and treat as separate items for discussion.
Correct. Item A, motion to approve the attached agreement with Alcohol Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board of County, Cogah County, the Adams Board at no cost. Motion to approve the attached agreement with Nautica Entertainment LLC for the use of windows on the river for 2021 prom on May 21, 2021 at a cost of $5,000. Motion to approve service agreement with Pest Management Incorporated for services during 2020-21 at a cost of $4,485. Motion to approve agreement with the Educational Service Center Northeast of Ohio providing audiology services for students residing in the Cogah High School District for 2020-21 school year at a cost not to exceed per the contract. Motion to approve agreement with the Educational Service Center Northeast Ohio for providing visual services for students residing in the Cogah High School District for 2021 at a cost not to exceed contract stated price. Motion to approve Jefferson County Educational Service Center VC Gradebook Participation Agreement for Online Curriculum for 2020-21 school year. And I ask that those items be approved. We'll talk about the other two as a separate motion.
Okay, so can I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda items through 11F?
So moved.
Ms. Schuker moves. Mr. Naaman, seconds. Any discussion?
Just the Adams Board is a no-cost contract for alcohol drug rehabilitation. We sign that annually with them. They provide services as needed. Nautica is the location for next year's prom that the students and advisors have kind of searched out. Pest Management is our pest management company. Renewal their contract. The ESC for audiology and for visual services, that's on an as-needed basis. They would come out and work with students. We would schedule that time per the contract rates there. And Jefferson County ESC is the curriculum that we will be using with the online learning program. And when Mr. Young steps in a little bit later, he'll talk a little bit more about that curriculum.
Very good. Mr. Mucio, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Schuker.
Aye.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
Mrs. Eder.
Aye.
Mr. Suchaki.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. We're now going to consider Item G of the superintendent's business.
Recommendation for the approval of the Cogah Heights Schools Remote Learning Plan for 2020-20 is required by House Bill 164 for submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Dobbins, seconds. Ms. Schuker, motion. Is there any discussion?
These are the items that will go to Columbus that were required for approval. This is not the restart plan. We'll talk about that next. I'll let Mr. Young step in and talk about what these plans look like.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. So the remote learning plan, as Mr. Evans mentioned, is part of House Bill 164, which was emergency legislation for the reopening schools. It was signed by Governor Kleinback on June 19. This plan requires that we meet six criteria. You can see those in the second paragraph on the opening page of that document. But basically, what we need to do is we need to outline a general description of how we would deliver remote learning. A remote learning plan is a little different than a blended learning plan. A blended learning plan requires that all instruction not done in person must be done electronically. By having a remote learning plan, it can be electronic or it can be paper and pencil, should you need to go to that particular route. Those six criteria are listed, but more importantly, when school districts submit this plan to the state, it signifies that we are compliant with minimum hour requirements and funding eligibility criteria. So students will receive credit for attending a full score, at least a full school year's worth of hours, as required by Ohio Revised Code, by having a remote learning plan in place. This is a separate document from a return-to-school plan. This has nothing to do with how you're going to sanitize schools, has nothing to do with your operations, has nothing to do with health and safety procedures. This is strictly ways that you will address some of the accountability issues, how you're going to address professional development, how you're going to promote students from grade to grade, how attendance will be taken, and how you're going to be able to address gaps so that you can ensure that we have equitable access across the board with instruction. So this plan is required to be approved. The original date was July 31. It got extended to August 21, but this must be submitted to the Department of Education, not for their approval, but it has to have board, local board approval, and then submission by August 21. They will post everybody's remote learning plans on their website. So that's your remote learning.
So Mr. Evans and Mr. Young, we received numerous comments from the public and parents in particular over the last week or two. And if it's at all possible, it would be helpful if we could address some of those comments as we go through these two plans. So if it's at all possible, any of the comments that you recall receiving that pertain to, say, attendance or other factors that are in the plan that's either Item G, that would be helpful. And I do want to take the time to thank the administration and the entire team for the extraordinary amount of work and time that they put into trying to put these plans together.
Sorry, I had myself muted there. I will say that when I go through the back-to-school plan, I'm going to go page by page through that plan. And I've prepared some general answers to a lot of the questions. I will tell you that I believe that every email that I've received, I've responded to individually, so those people have responses for me. But I want to, because some of those are very similar, I want to go over those. And I also want to go over some of the operational things that we're implementing and as well as we go through the plan. So, and parents that are online on YouTube listening, you can still contact me via email. I will tell you that probably next Monday, I'll be sending out a two or three different Zoom meeting invitations that parents can log into a Zoom meeting, and myself and the administrative team will be online, and you can ask us specific questions regarding the reopening plan, operational, anything specific in person. We'll still answer them via email, but if you want to do that in person, we'll have those meetings set up, as many as we need, quite honestly. If we need more than three, we'll have more than three, so that everybody gets their questions answered in the best way possible. Thank you. So that's its first motion be approved, and then I'll go through the restart, reset plan on the next motion.
Okay, and just as kind of a high-level threshold question, do you anticipate that either of these plans would be amended or revised from time to time based on change in circumstances and just simply new information that we obtained?
No, absolutely. We've never experienced anything like this in education. So we have no frame of reference to develop the plan. The plans are purposely created so that we have some flexibility and to be able to make changes as we need changes. And changes are happening daily. When we get to back-to-school plan, I'll tell you what the Board of Health just came out with less than 24 hours ago. So we have to have the ability to make changes quickly and be ready very quickly, and we will do that. And I think that's one of the things that, as a district, we've done pretty well in the past. Our teachers have done a phenomenal job of adopting, of adapting to some of these situations. And they understand that this is a learning process for all of us. We've put a great deal of time and effort into the plans, but also know that we have to be ready to change on a moment's notice based on what happens with the COVID crisis and conditions that are out there.
Can I just have a little clarification or maybe a little bit more description on this online curriculum that's through the Jefferson County ESC? Was there not one through our own ESC that was good or that you guys thought would be appropriate for our students?
At the time, at the time we looked at it, theirs wasn't, we didn't feel it met the needs as well as this one does. This curriculum gives our teachers the flexibility to go in and add to it, to take away from it, to set parameters to it. And one of the considerations that when we chose our online learning plan is that our teachers wanted to make sure that it mirrored as closely as possible what they were teaching in their classrooms so that when students transitioned back into school, that that transition's easier. And this program gives us a greater flexibility in doing that, moving through it. There's a lot of different plans out there. There's plans that are kind of run on their own. In other words, we wouldn't have to monitor them at all. They would just dump grades into us, that they would distribute the curriculum. They would deliver it. They would grade papers or tests, and they would forward grades to us. We didn't opt for any of those options because our teachers want to be able to see the curriculum. They want it to match up to the standards that we're teaching and, again, make that transition as smooth as possible when students transition back into the building.
Good. I trust you did your due diligence here, and there was no reason to reinvent the wheel either, so.
Well, quite honestly, Mrs. Eder, we looked at Jefferson County probably eight years ago when Dr. Holland was superintendent. I researched it as a principle because at that time, we were looking at it as an addition of possibly courses that we couldn't or didn't have the ability to offer because of our size, maybe some additional... Maybe some additional curriculum that we might be able to offer to some students at that time. And at that time, the board and Dr. Holland didn't want to go forward with it. But I, again, is probably as early as 2012 was in discussion with him. Mr. Young's talked to him on several occasions. They presented to myself and Mr. Young. I think we have a very doable system here. I think it's going to be relatively easy for our teachers to work its way through as well.
So just to clarify, Tom, too, because I know we talked earlier, but just to kind of put it like in Naaman's terms, it would be our teacher, even though it's an online curriculum, it would be our teachers that would be teacher of record. So they'd be the ones creating, they'd be the ones issuing the final grade.
Correct. Absolutely. So let's be, and as an example, Mr. Martin's Algebra I class has 15 students in it right now, and five of those students have chosen the online option. So Mr. Martin would have, in progress book, he would have his 10 students that are in class and the other five students that are doing the Jefferson ESC. It would still show up on the same class roster. The online students might be doing different work, but he can adjust the pace of that. He can add to it. He can take away from it. But he can make sure that pace stays the same as his pace in the classroom as best way possible, but it still shows them as members. They're still Cog Heights students. They're still part of our role, and we can control a good portion of that.
Thank you. Very good.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, may I have a motion to approve 11G? I'm sorry, it's vote on 11G. I apologize.
Ms. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Utter.
Aye.
Mr. Sutaki.
Hi.
Mr. Naaman.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0, item 11H.
Okay, motion to approve the back-to-school plan for 2021 school year as presented. I asked for a motion for approval, and then I'll go through it during discussion.
So moved.
Ms. Schukert moves.
Second.
Okay, I second. So now we have discussion.
Okay, I'm going to, Matt, if you can open that up on the screen so people can follow along. I'm going to, I'm going to, the first three pages, I have some statements. I want to go to page four, the COVID, the risk level guidelines. Back it up a little bit, Matt. There we go. And please understand that these are just guidelines, and as I've had discussion with, and quite honestly, I can see us already maybe deviating from this chart. This is the guideline chart that came out from the state, and we try to align some of our plans to that. I will tell you that the email that I got today from the ESC, from the County Board of Health, also with the County Board of Health involved, is that Franklin County's Board of Health has recommended that all their school districts begin the school year remotely. We don't know what they're going to do with that. We have a very strong feeling that the Board, the County Board of Health in Cog Heights County may issue the same recommendation to schools. Some schools have already opted to start remotely, and they, I haven't seen the detail to it yet, but they're very specific about how the levels would need to change and what way in order to bring back into the building. Again, that's a recommendation from them. The County Board of Health can't force us close through this in that way, but that would be what the recommendation is. So I will tell you that if that does happen the next day or two, we'll be having that discussion because, quite honestly, I believe that most of the schools in the county would probably follow that recommendation based on discussions I've had with the local superintendents. So this was just a guide. I will tell you that this is completely fluid. We know that purple will be remote. As I said to a couple of board members today, in red, we've got listed as a hybrid, but there's got to be some flexibility in that. If this would have, two weeks ago, when we were in a high alert section of red, I would say we would have started remotely at that time. We also know that we've got another three and a half weeks to start a school, and I don't have a crystal ball. I'm not going to predict where we're going to be at that point in time. But we want to make that decision as closely to the start as possible and also give parents enough time to know what they might have to do with their students if we are all remote. Or how they're going to have their students cared for at home and what's going to be in place at that time. So again, that email just came out less than 24 hours ago, so that, again, this whole situation could be changing very drastically, very quickly.
Tom, can you talk about, because I know I've seen it in some of the emails from community members, is there like a day? Is this going to change by the week, like the levels? Like, what is the county doing with changing the levels? Is there a day that they change on? How would that impact school?
It's a Thursday with kind of about a week advance kind of notice on it. So this isn't going to change from week to week. The way that they've described it in some of their mails, you're probably going to know about three weeks in advance of when it, which is, I think, why they're initiating the letters right now as schools begin to start. It's going to be about a three-week process, and they're going to do, they're going to give you trend data, and they're going to tell you why they're moving in a certain direction. They're going to tell you exactly how many indicators, and they're going to kind of give you a projected date as to when it might change as well. So and again, it's all based off of the testing and the hospital admissions and things that are going on right now and that we see in the news. So they hold the data. But again, it's not, this isn't one week in, one week out. No way, shape, or form does it look anything like that. Once we go remote, I would anticipate we'd be in remote for some time before it would trend back to an area where we would be at a level where we could even come back to a hybrid model at school.
Okay, so parents are worried about, like, you know, have childcare concerns and things like that. They would, what I hear you saying is that they would know in advance, and it would be for a period of time that wouldn't just be a short-term kind of thing.
Right, absolutely. I would, and again, I'm guesstimating on this because the Department of Health hasn't given us anything definite. But if we were put in that, whatever the change, what I would say would be a minimum of three weeks before there'd be any other change back or forth, one way or the other. Because it's not, if you're one indicator in, you're over back, they want to be vassaling back and forth in that fashion. And as I said to a parent today in an email, in a perfect world, I want to be able to give everybody at least a week's notice to be able to, whatever, secure daycare, especially for younger children, and figure some things out along the way.
Thank you.
This recommendation makes no mention of size of school, does it?
No.
So they're doing like, just painting, you know, one brush for every, for everyone.
Which is exactly why the governor said local control on this, understanding that different size districts, whether rural, urban, suburban. And I've talked to, I talked to no less than 200 superintendents on a weekly basis from all around the state about their plans and about their risk levels in their counties and what they're doing and how they're reacting to that, just to try and bounce ideas off to see what might be happening. And I think one of the reasons for the local control was there are some counties that haven't been hit very hard. And if you're out in Mercer County where you've had a limited number of cases identified, they want to let those schools open and open the way they feel they should open. Counties that are red or approaching purple, they certainly want us to be more cautious as well. So that's the reason for the local control part of that. They want some flexibility in the state because everybody in the state is not affected the same way, quite honestly. And that, what that leads to is 612 school districts with 612 different plans coming back into school. And that, quite honest, that's not an understatement. I don't know that any two plans throughout the state are identical, after having talked to, again, superintendents from around the state. So. All right, let's go to the next page. Again, this would be the, whether we were all in or a hybrid situation, some general expects, expectations. And I'll go through this as quickly as possible, but also as thoroughly as possible, too. I don't want to rush through this. Some student and family expectations is that we're going to ask parents to do a wellness check of their student before they leave the house, temperature check. And also, we'll be sending out the symptoms for the COVID and checking with their students before they send them on a bus and send them into school. If the child, we're going to report your children absent standard procedures, our call-in procedures. Make sure you have caregivers available, too, if a children falls ill at school. If a student falls ill with the symptoms, they go to an isolated area with a nurse, and we will call parents and ask them to pick up as soon as possible from the building. Provide a clean mask for your child to wear. We're also going to provide masks for the children, as you saw through that previous purchase order. But, you know, we went K to 12 on the masks, and I think initially, we heard 3 through 12 recommendation and recommendation from the governor. But I think as you see schools put their plans together, you see more and more schools have gone to the K to 12. And I've talked to some parents of some younger children. We know that that's a difficult task, and that's an issue that they're all working on. We're going to work on it here at school as well. We're going to spend time, you know, with the students on how to wear the mask and the reasons for the mask, just as well with hand washing and hand sanitation and social distancing. We're going to spend a great deal of time talking about those things with our students at the start of the school year to make sure that everybody has a thorough understanding of that. And then we'll work our way through it as we go there. Also, backpacks for the children. I will mention that in the high school, if we can go every other locker, Mr. Birk thinks we might have enough lockers to be able to spread students out. We may do that. If not, we're going to, students are going to have to carry a lot of their supplies and books in backpacks. We're going to talk to teachers about maybe keeping books in classrooms as much as possible. So, you know, some of those middle school kids weigh about 65 pounds, and they got 55 pounds of books, and it's not a healthy situation for them. So we'll do the best we can to work through some of that. Materials are not going to be shared between students. So I know one of the questions came from a parent about supplies. Are we going to alter our supplies? It's no, we're not. What we're going to do is we're going to work internally to solve some of those issues. We know in art, quite honestly, they share a lot of supplies to do art projects. All of our specials are staying in place. We're working with Mrs. Orlando and our high school art teachers about what we need to do to add the supplies to make sure that they've got ample supplies for each student to have their own set of supplies in classrooms for the projects that they need to do. So we're addressing that situation as well. What we expect from the students, we want to wash our hands at the designated times, and we'll work through each building rotations on how to do that. The elementary, I know Mrs. Houchen already has talked to teachers about a system of doing that. We're going to also work with the middle school and high school students. Use hand sanitizer often. We purchased 100 additional hand sanitizing stations. Every classroom will have a hand sanitizing station inside of it. We'll have additional ones at entrances. We'll have additional ones in the cafeterias that will be filled on a daily basis. Wear masks at all times. The County Health Department, if you took a look at that first information sheet I sent out, recommends two protocols in place at all times. What are those protocols? Those protocols are a mask, face shield, a desk shield, and social distancing. And we believe that we can meet that two-protocol requirement at all times throughout the day. Again, carry the backpack covered, coughs and sneezes. And again, we'll go through protocols with the students on how to do that. Avoid touching their face, specifically their eye, nose, and mouth. That's not an easy task. But and also kind of keep your hands off of other people. And, you know, we generally kind of preach that to begin with. We shouldn't have our hands on other people. And that's just one of those things that we'll work through with students again, that I think some of them are going to be very excited to see their friends they haven't seen for a very long time. When we get back in session, there's going to be a right way of doing it and a wrong way of doing it. And we know that some of those elementary schools, they all want to give Mrs. Houchen a hug, so we're going to have to hold off on the hugs for a while. But just kind of keep unto themselves on those things. For the employees, wear their mask or face shield at all times unless they're alone in the class. Wellness checks, we're going to ask employees when they come in to do a self-wellness check in our, in each of the nurses' offices. We've got infrared thermometers to do that. Wash their hands, sanitize often. Same thing, cover their mouths with sneezes and what have you. And same thing with, you know, really not hands-on, and we've never been kind of the hands-on group anyhow, but that goes without saying. Teacher assistance, assist with the classroom setups and social distancing. I will tell you that the social distancing, you'll see in that County Health sheet, it says a minimum of three, six is preferred. We know in a lot of classrooms, we can get that six-foot social distancing. We also know that some of those classrooms are a little bit tighter. We're looking at numbers. We're looking at possibly moving some classes to some bigger areas, using some open spaces if we have bigger classes so we can space those students appropriately. That probably happens more frequently in the high school. We know we've got the open areas K through 3 in the elementary that we can space out. Each teacher is going to work with Mrs. Houchen and the maintenance custodial staff about getting those desks spread out, and so we've got the right distancing in our classrooms. Third grade's a little bit tougher because those are in enclosed classrooms. But again, once we know what students are going to opt for the online, we'll be, we should be able to adjust the numbers and meet the needs of those classrooms as well. Physical distancing, as we move students through the building, we're going to try and keep them in place as much as possible. The elementary doesn't work on a bell schedule, so they work, they work on, you know, kind of a written time schedule. We're going to try to reduce as much movement as possible, but we're still going to run all of our specials. A big concern was, is my child still going to have art, music, reading time, phys ed? Yes, all those specials are going to come into play. Some of them might get modified a little bit. I will tell you, gym in the elementary building will be primarily outside because we're going to use the gymnasium to spread the cafeteria tables out so we can social distance for lunch. Art, again, Mrs. Orlando's already working on projects that we can do in art and keep our social distancing and not have to share supplies. Mr. Berlone, Mr. Sokel, and Mr. Michaels have done a tremendous job of going through a document that we got from another school district on how we can run our music programs effectively with masks and social distancing. And the wind instruments is the big problem, but and our choir and those types of things. So we plan on having all those things in place. Please understand that my entire administrative team, our new hires don't start officially until August 1st. Now, Mr. Janatovic and Mr. Young have been in and working already, but we're going to spend the first part of next week in administrative meetings hammering out a lot of the details to this that we will, again, forward those as we have them done. Provide reminders and issue warnings about contacting, contacting parents about students. And we're going to work with students and families about the, you know, the touching, the mask, keeping the mask on and those things as we go through. Custodians, we're going to do regular disinfecting throughout the day, especially on high-volume surfaces. We're going to have doors propped open or we can have doors propped open so they're not constantly on using the door handles. We're going to wipe down the cafeterias after every lunch is done before the next group comes in. But protocols in place, the restrooms will be cleaned periodically throughout, during the course of the day. One other thing that was mentioned, I know that the topic of the deep cleaning came up on the hybrid schedule that Wednesday. Please know that we, our building gets cleaned every night. Our cleaning people come in at about 2:00, and every desk in the district gets wiped down, always has got wiped down. The trash gets emptied from classrooms every day that we're in session. What the deep cleaning day will do, the things that we're adding there, is we're adding, we've added sanitizing machines that after we're done deep cleaning classrooms, we can go in with sanitizer. It's an ionized spray that attaches itself to all surfaces and is designed to dry on the surfaces as a disinfectant. We've got two additional machines. We have one now. We had two, purchased two additional ones so that every surface will get sanitized every evening as we go through this process. And administrative-wise, we're going to ensure that the procedures are in place to maximize social distancing where possible. We've ordered a lot of the signage to go on the floors, like for lunch lines, to keep them social distance, and I'll talk about some of those specifics as we get through that. In the classrooms, some of the top part of that is being, is a little bit redundant there. Again, child check before you send them off to school, mask, we'll provide one. Again, follow the instructions of the staff wearing the mask. Students should have the mask on entering, exit, moving around the room. Wearing a mask is required when working directly with staff one-on-one, small group. Distancing cannot be maintained. It's required when working closely with other students in small group or lab settings. We want to maintain physical distance from peers wherever possible. Again, the hand sanitizing stations there and avoid touching their face or handling anybody else's belongings as well. So some of the classroom expectations of the students, and you see the staff and the custodians and administrative expectations are pretty similar there. Hallways and common areas, what, we're going to limit traffic in the hallways. Elementary, again, they work on their own kind of time schedule, so classes are in the hallways kind of individually. We don't have mass class changes. In the middle school and high school, we're going to stagger release times for classes. We might have a class leave one minute before the bell, one class on the bell, another class a minute after bell to keep the congestion out of the hallways. When students arrive at school in the middle When students arrive at school in the middle school, high school, they're going to report to the cafeteria or in the north gymnasium area where they're, we'll social distance the students down there. And then we'll release them to the first period classes from there. We won't be using convocation. We won't be using the homeroom as well. And we'll release them by grade level in staggered times again to prevent that. Those mass gatherings in the hallways and to keep our distancing as we move through the day. We're also taking into consideration late arrival and early release. I'm, I'm. One of my pet peeves as an administrator, I'm not in favor of that generally speaking. Under these current conditions, if we have students that don't have a first period class, we may offer them to do a late arrival to school just to relieve some congestion. Students that don't have a ninth period class, we may offer an early release option for those students. That gets some students out of the building before the end of the day. Again, just to relieve some of that congestion they would normally have. The question of, please know, parents that are online, another survey is going to be coming out next week and it's going to be, the survey is going to ask you several questions. It's going to, it's going to ask you whether you're choosing the online option or the in school option. It's going to ask you about if you were going to transport your own students. We know that more parents are planning on transporting their own students to school right now. Mrs. Houchen, Chief Sturgill and I are meeting next week to work out a drop off plan for the elementary building because that's where we get some congestion. And we're going to figure that out so we can do that in a little bit more of an orderly fashion because we just anticipate having more parents drive. As far as our transportation is concerned, school buses will be running. We're going to go with the two students per seat, masks, mask mandatory. We're trying to get more Lexan so we can put Lexan behind the bus drivers as a screen. Right now with what's going on, it's hard to come by Lexan. If we can't do that, the first seat will be empty on the bus. The bus drivers will assign the seating. We're going to have family members sit together whenever possible on the buses transporting students. In between runs and when the high school, middle school dropped off, every bus will be wiped on before it goes for the elementary run. And brings the elementary students in. So and then they'll be sanitized at the end of every day. And then on those Wednesdays, we're going to have our bus drivers in again, to do a deep clean of each bus. Every bus will have hand sanitizer mounted in it. And we're working on that right now with the highway patrol where we can put that, where it's safe and not a deterrent to entering and exit the bus. Following some guidelines on that. Hallways and common areas, some additional things. Again, we're just going to reduce traffic in those areas. Lunchtime was another question that came up as we went through this process. We're going to space lunch tables out in the elementary building. We're going to use the cafeteria and the gymnasium. So we can space students out with the purchase of these desk dividers. I think we're also going to use the dividers in the lunchrooms that on, at the tables as well to help keep us, to help students keep social distancing. So they can take their masks off, they can eat lunch. They can still socialize with the kids at their table and we'll have the shields in place. We'll, we'll have no more than three or four to a table to keep them spaced out and spread those tables out through those two different areas. In the high school, middle school, we're going to use the lobby outside the gym. We're going to space tables out there as well. And we're also going to encourage students that when the weather is good, we're going to have the back doors open. Students will be able to go out and sit in the bleachers and space themselves and have lunch outside to keep some spacing outside as well. Take advantage of the weather the best we can as we move through this process. And again, after every lunch, the tables will all be sanitized and wiped down immediately following lunch before the next group comes in or before a study hall comes in. The question came up about students sanitizing their own desk areas. That we asked that question of the county health department and and they were a little bit vague with their answer, but one of the things that we, we students will be permitted to sanitize their own state, their own desk if they choose to. We'll have sanitizing wipes available in the classrooms so they can wipe them down. That, that's we're not going to make that mandatory, but we're going to talk to students about doing that as an additional precaution. Especially in the high school, middle school where they're going to, because of the class rotations, they're going to have to move a little bit more. In elementary, we won't be moving quite as much or the sixth grade groups won't move quite as much either. But we're going to talk to students about that. We're going to make sure that we've got sanitizing wipes that are safe for children to to use. That was a key component with the Department of Health as well. Drop off pickup and visitors. Just know that we're, the drop off zones may change a little bit. Once we meet administratively, we'll get complete details about drop off, off, out to parents and how we can move through the best way possible with that. It's been a constant battle in the elementary building simply because we can't come all the way around the building. We've got the back area and and it's a limited front area. High school is a little bit easier because it's a, we've got all 71st street to do. We're going to consider maybe dropping off towards the back of the building, especially if we're going to have students report directly to the cafeteria. That's a shorter trip. They're not working their way through the building that way. So that's one of those things that that we will discuss. Parents, we're going to ask that you just don't, that any time that you need to come to school, you call ahead and and make sure that you talk to the office and let them know that if you're coming to drop off a medication or a book that your student forgot, we're really going to limit visitors in the building. We don't, we're not going to have anybody walk around the building. We've already told a lot of the salespeople to deal with the school district. They're going to have to set up appointments after school hours to meet with, with the cafeteria staff or our maintenance custodial staff that we, that we're not going to have them in the building during the day, just to limit the traffic in the building. And again, anybody that would visit the building, we, we're going to require a mask of those, of those people. Please know that every classroom, we're going to give a mask to every student. Every teacher will have a box of disposable masks in our classroom. For if student wants to use the disposable mask option, every classroom will have hand sanitizer in it and every classroom will have disinfectant wipes in it as well, in every classroom throughout the district. Transportation, we talked a little about the two per seat. Bus drivers will assign seats. Again, we're going to recommend families sit together. Something that came up today from a parent question was, have we considered using bus monitors? Quite honestly, I hadn't thought about that. That may be a consideration as we move forward with this. Once, once we see what kind of numbers we're going to have on the buses. And again, bus routes are going to stay, stay the same. We're going to pick students up the same as we always have. It might be a little bit tighter on that elementary run because we're going to have to sanitize the buses in between the middle school, high school drop off. So we're going to have to work our way through that. The first week, just to make sure that we're okay time wise on that. Meetings, conference, meetings and conferences. If we're having a meeting with a family, whether it's an IEP meeting, a journal meeting with parents, parents will be given the option to do that zoom meeting or to come in. If the parents come in for the meeting, know that we're going to social distance in the rooms and require parents to have masks on if they do that also to health screen before they come in as well. But we're going to continue to meet on a regular basis. We have IEP meetings that we need to conduct it. That we had a good luck in the spring doing via Google meets and zoom meetings. And we'll continue down that path. And quite honestly, we're going to, we're going to go with what best fits the parent and if the parent wants to be in and have that discussion, we'll, we'll make that happen. If the parent would rather do that via Google meter zoom, we'll make that happen as well. But we're, you know, we'll limit the entry on that as well. Health services, our nursing stations, we're in the process right now of finding, we have to have designated areas for any student that's exhibiting COVID symptoms separate from our normal nurses offices. What we may do is use the nurses offices as the COVID stations and then create a second area. But in any event, we have to have two separate areas. Our nurses will have masks and gloves and they'll, they'll do the screening checks for students that come down with symptoms. Know that parents will be called as quickly as possible on that. And we're going to ask teachers that any student that is is exhibiting those symptoms or talking about any of those symptoms that we refer them to the office. And have them checked by the nurse and then contact the parent. Parents that are online, we're asking you to do those checks every morning before you send your students off to school. That helps us a great deal. We don't have testing in place. At the school, the, as far as temperature checks, when they come in the building. One source told me that you might not get an accurate read with students coming off the buses. Another group said, why would you, why wouldn't you test them on the buses? The, we're not going to put that on the bus drivers to test students as they're getting on the buses. So we're going to ask parents to do that. And please don't send them if they're exhibiting any of those symptoms as a precaution. Please keep them home. And also please make sure that you've got a go to person. If you can't free yourself and work to come pick them up, a family member that can come pick them up in the event that we would need a student sent home. The question has come up in regards to quarantining. I'll repost the health guidelines from the county health department. Please know that anybody that tests positive for COVID. It's a, it's a mandatory 10 days and they have to have three days where they have had, have been symptom free before they can return. That's student or teacher, anybody that's been exposed to someone with COVID. An exposure is defined by the county health department of more than 10 minutes of contact time with that person is a 14 day quarantine. With, again, no symptoms during that time, no symptoms, no temperature during that 14 days. That, those are the county health guidelines that have been sent out. Those are what we will adhere to as we go through this process. Contact tracing has come up as a question. Where Cleveland city schools is going to be permitted to do their own contact tracing. Their, their nursing staff has been trained. We're looking into that as well because we know that at the county, the contact tracing may take as many as three to five days. Three to five days means that someone, it could have been through the whole building. We don't know. One of the disadvantage to our size is that with our buildings so close to each other, that if there's an outbreak, it very well could have been in multiple places. That person very well could have been in multiple places throughout the district. So we're going to work with the county health department on that. But that's the most recent guidelines that we got back from the county health department and that'll be posted on the school website on their forum. So you know that you can see exactly how they answer questions. Know that we meet with the county, the local superintendents meet with the county health department every Friday. We have for the last two Fridays. We've got one scheduled from now through the remainder of this process for question and answers from them and guidelines as we move through this. Lunches and cafeteria, we're going to have the social distancing markers on the floor. We're currently putting up shields in the cafeteria lunch lines. We're looking at possibly a touchless checkout system. Mr. Wallace is, we're looking at possible IDs with the kids would scan an ID and that would go to their lunch to, again, reduce some of that work. Although IDs can present a whole different set of problems too, with students losing IDs and what have you. We had the key pads. We're looking for alternative method of doing that. Students that bring their lunches, we're, we're going to take a look at how our time works. We don't want students rushed through lunch. We want to make sure that we get everybody through our lunch line to have appropriate time. That downtime, that half hour is important to our students. So if we have to modify or adjust times with our lunches, we will do so to make sure that every kid's getting their appropriate amount of time at lunch. Again, sanitizing everything in between lunches, all the, all the tabletops, all the, what have you throughout the lunchrooms and try to empty the trash in between lunches as well. We'll have additional supervision in the lunchrooms as we work through this process. Also masks on every, all staff as well. Students, when they're at their tables can have their masks off. We're going to ask if they keep their mask on through the lunch lines. But when they sit down to eat, obviously masks off and we're going to see how those desk dividers work in the elementary, middle school and then possibly take a look at, at purchasing some of those for the high school. When we originally looked at dividers for the both cafeterias, the first quote that we got back from a company was $75,000 just for our cafeteria tables. And that's, that's about $20,000 more than we're getting from the CARES funding. So we're looking for alternatives to that. We know we can space. If we, these portable desk dividers work out, we'll fall back on those as well. Restrooms, stagger restroom times and encourage students to make sure that they're, that they're washing their hands in the restrooms. The restrooms, we're going to have a regular cleaning schedule throughout the day for the restrooms. Try and get to those restrooms at least three times a day. The other topic that has come up is that all the water fountains will be shut down, are shut down in the district. So we're going to encourage families to send their students to school with, with a water bottle. We're looking at water filling stations that we can set up so students can fill their water bottles throughout the day. We know that August and September can be hot times in some of our older buildings. What we've done is we, we purchased some additional portable air conditioning units. We're going to replace some in the elementary building in the third grade classes. We're going to see if we can add a few more to the middle school part of the building. But we're also going to have water available for students throughout the day. If it gets, if the heat gets real oppressive, we'll make sure that we've got water bottles available for students so they can stay hydrated throughout the day. And hydration is a key to fighting off the COVID as well. So looking to put that place, looking for port. We know that if and when we get to a building renovation, when we replace water fountains, we'll add water filling stations. We haven't done that yet. We don't have any water filling stations right now. So we're trying to work with the department of health to find out what's acceptable for a water filling station, quite honestly. What we can do is to make sure those students can stay hydrated throughout the day. Get masked throughout the day. The offices, the main offices, we've got distancing in the, in the high school, middle school office. We're looking at some shields for the elementary office, a little closer proximity there. Again, everybody that enters the building, we're asking, they've done a temperature check beforehand. We're asking that they keep a mask on. We, we're asking the parents prearrange visits and whether it's pickup or drop off of materials, the police call in advance. And to keep physical distancing protocols in place. We'll, again, we'll have backup masks if students forget mask in the district as well. And we're going to limit travel throughout the building. So we're going to limit students in and out of the office areas unless it's on an emergency type basis. So in the past, we've used student aids to do some things throughout the building. We won't be doing that this year. We're just going to try to limit traffic in the hallways the best way possible. In overview, the remote learning, talk a little bit more about the in the hybrid plan, again, the Jefferson ESC curriculum is what we would use. That would be, you know, two days in Monday, Tuesday in, Wednesday out, Thursday, Friday in. A lot of parents have mentioned school districts in, that are going to run an AB schedule. I've talked with a lot of those school districts and quite honestly, they're doing that because of numbers and class sizes. Several of those schools have more than 30 students per class. They have to go to an AB schedule. Generally speaking, we don't have class sizes that, that large. So we feel that we can get our students under the hybrid plan in the building four days a week. And that, that's just more effective teaching wise. If there are classes that are larger, some, some of the more popular high school classes, we're going to look to the possible different locations for those classes. If a number of students opt for the online remote learning, we know that that will reduce class size. We're going to work with the teachers on setting their classrooms up and getting extra desks and things out of the room so we can keep things spaced out in that regard. As far as the online, the remote learning part of that, those Wednesdays, we are going to, it'll be in the survey. For parents that have kindergarten through sixth graders, we're going to look to offer online learning sites for those parents on Wednesdays. I've talked to, I talked to the mayors quite some time ago about the possibility using the community centers and the village halls. Based on what the numbers are, we'll know when we get the surveys back. People that are interested in that option. We still have details to work out with that, but that will be an online learning day for those students. That is not daycare. I want to be very clear with that. That's an online learning. We will have teachers, aides, staff those locations. We will have our technology department will have Chromebooks at those sites. The students will have a schedule worked out for online learning. We're also talking to the librarian about doing some expanded reading programs, but we will have a schedule for those online learning sites. And again, we would offer those up for people with K through six. Our belief is that seven through 12 grade students should be able to function at home without supervision if that's what the parents have to do. But we'll know when we get surveys back what we're going to look at. Parents, the other question came, would, would their child be assigned to an online learning site in their village? Quite honestly, what we were looking at initially was, was using Kihaaga Heights Village Hall first of all, because it's right across the street from the school. We get supplies back and forth more readily. And then if we have to expand to the other sites, we would talk to those mayors and see what space we'd have available. Students would be social distanced in those space, in those places. They would have to bring their own lunch to those as well. They would have to have masks on as well. So all the same protocols that would take place in school would take place there. Our staff would, would be there to manage it. Our staff would, we'd send our cleaning staff to clean and sanitize the areas afterwards. The, the mayors have been very generous in offering spaces for us. What we're current of them is just that space and we'll take care of everything else as far as that's concerned. Those online, those Wednesdays would also be, we're working with the teacher staff about what their day would look like. We're going to encourage teachers to make contact with some of the students that have chosen the remote online learning plan. We want to make sure that those students, we stay in touch with those, we monitor those students. Know that if you choose to take the remote learning plan as your primary option, attendance is required for those as well. So we're going to have, we're going to go in and we're going to check the logins and the attendance into the Jefferson County ESC. The state has required us, last spring, they were very, I don't want to say lax, but they were very flexible as far as attendance was concerned. Moving into this plan, it's going to have much more stringent attendance requirements. And we're going to have to report to the state that, and certify to the state that our students are receiving the hours of instruction that we guarantee students receive. So that'll be part of that as we move through that as well. As I said before, those programs will mirror what we have at Heights. The question came up about AP and honors classes. At our first glance, yes, they will have those options. Some of the elective options are going to be more difficult. We haven't looked at the online, like art or music or those types of things. So we don't know what we're going to be able to offer in those regards. But we know that we'll be able to offer core classes, also foreign language through that online remote plan. So teachers, we just getting access to that. And we're going to have the teachers start taking a look at that and give us some feedback on that as well. If we go to 100% remote, in other words, if we go to, if for whatever reason we end up on 100% remote, please know that we are, we're going to create schedules for the teachers. And we can't follow the normal school schedule because if you've got multiple students in your household, I know Mrs. Schukert's online, she's got three students and she might only have two devices at her house. So they might have to space out who's using what, when. So we're going to develop some schedules where teachers will be on at designated times and get those schedules out to parents. So if it's, if it's, you know, Mr. Schaefer's our class, Mr. Schaefer might be on every Tuesday from 10 to 11:30 delivering a lesson and maybe every Thursday from 1:00 to 2:30 delivering a lesson. So the key to the success of the remote learning plan, and I saw this firsthand when my granddaughter was keeping students on a schedule. And we will have a schedule sent to families for remote learning if we get into that situation where everybody, if we're out of school at 100%. And Mr. Young is working on that probably as he's listening in on this right now. We're going to have, we're going to work with the teachers to set up office hours. Out of respect, our teachers did a phenomenal job last spring. But our teachers were also probably answering emails and phone calls at 10, 11 o'clock at night. We have to create a schedule that works for our teachers because our teachers has families as well as we go through this process. So we're going to work some times out throughout the day, especially if we're in 100% remote, that teachers can post office hours where you can shoot them an email or possibly log on and talk to them via Zoom and get some questions answered about moving through that. We saw that some parents in the first survey said great response from the teachers. They were very happy and some other families had a difficulty getting some responses from teachers. So we want to work out and have something in place ahead of time so that parents know when they can expect to be able to get ahold of the teacher and when not because our teachers have families as well. And you know, their evening time is going to be designated for them to be able to spend time with their own families as well as we work through this. Again, I talked about the attendance with that option as well. And we'll be monitoring that, going through that. Talked about routine. We may adjust schedules as necessary. One of the reasons for this plan, and some people say that, you know, it's missing some detail and that's by design. We know going into this that we may have to change on a moment's notice. This has never happened in the history of schools. So we're creating things from the ground up and I'm not exaggerating when I tell you there's 612 different plans out there with 612 different school districts throughout the state. So we're going to, one of the characteristics of Kaihoga Heights is we've been able to make adjustments that work for us because we're a little bit smaller, we can do that a little bit more quickly. So there's certainly some flexibility to this and we're going to find out what's working and what's not working. Our teachers are great at letting us know that what's not, what they're not having success with and what they are having success with and making necessary adjustments as we move through this. Also, we will do as we did, if we have to go 100% remote last spring, we'll make Chromebooks available for sign out. We also, I talked with Mr. Wallace, for those people that don't have internet connections, we're purchasing a number of, a limited number of hotspots. So people will be able to connect to the internet if that was a problem last spring. But we know that we had about 96 or 98% connectivity last spring when we went to the online option. Just know that this will be 100% remote if we jump into this, into this plan. So we'll do what we need to do. I think the way we handled it last time worked for us where everybody got at least one device. And then as families that needed more, we had more available. I don't know that anybody at the end of it did not have a device that needed a device. So families with multiple children, I know one family had five, we gave them five Chromebooks. So all their kids could be working at the same time. We know that that's a, especially if parents are working from home and they need the laptop or computer to work that students are going to have to have a device to work, to work on. So that plan will look very similar to what it looked like previously. Some other questions that I want to go through and answer that have come up, and I'm going to talk about this building wise and I'll talk about some operational things in the elementary building. Obviously face shields versus mask. The question came up, can my student wear a mask or a shield, a face shield as opposed to a mask? The original thing that I saw from the health department, the answer to that was yes. I've seen some other information that says no, it's not an adequate substitute. So we're, I'm waiting for clarification from the health department on that. As I said, elementary, middle school, we've already ordered the desk shields. If we think that's a very viable option, we have the option of buying some larger ones that we can use in the high school as well, if need be. Transportation, once again, your parents are going to be getting a survey, it's going to come out. We asked that everybody fill the survey out because we need to know about transportation, whether you're going to choose the in-school or the online option and some details around that. As I said before, Mrs. Houchen, Chief Serge and I are going to work on pickup and drop off for the elementary. Regular bus routes and pickups will take place if we're in session. As I said before, all specials are going to stay on schedules. We're not reducing any specials. I know some other districts have shortened their school day by taking their specials out, their elective classes. We're not planning on doing that. We know that we have to make some adjustments with the curriculum with art because we're not going to be able to share supplies. Music, again, those teachers have worked very well. Gym, we're going to have outside, predominantly outside recess will take place. The exact protocols for that, we're working on right now. There's several different ways of going about that. We're going to work with Mrs. Houchen and the teachers on what's going to work best for them. Lunch, yes, we're going to use the lunchroom. We're not going to have students eat in the classrooms. We're going to have them move to the lunchrooms, have them appropriately spaced and have the dividers in place and make sure we sanitize those areas. I already talked about water bottles and filling stations, classroom spacing is a big concern. We know that especially in the high school, we've got an 86-year-old building and we've got some small classrooms that we know that we're going to have to make some adjustments to class sizes. We might have to move some classes to some bigger, more open areas if need be. Know that those recommendations from the health department say no less than three foot with six foot being the goal in social distancing. And again, they also recommend two protocols in place. And so that would be social distancing and the mask and/or desk shield and/or face mask shield. The online curriculum, as we said, our teachers will be able to monitor and adjust that as needed. It links with our progress book. And that's going to be an advantage on that part of it. Students in middle school, high school, again, we're going to have them report to the cafeteria in the south gym to maintain social distancing. We're staggering the bell schedules to reduce hallway traffic. Again, I talked about we're considering late arrival, early release. Talked about the spreading out of lunch, also being outside weather permitting. Lockers, if possible, if we can go every other locker, we'll assign lockers. If we can't, we're not going to assign lockers and we'll work some protocols out on that. And the same thing with face masks, social distancing, water bottles. We're going to increase some portable air conditioners in the middle school as well to try and cool some classrooms off down there. The question of athletics has come up. Know that I spent two hours on a phone conference with all 22 schools in the league today. OHSAA is planning on a traditional August 1st start. I don't know that that's going to take place. Our league is working on it, are working on a way to maybe buy us some time and still have our students participate in a safe manner. We'll release that information as we get that. Quite honestly, our participation in athletics is up in almost every area. I think our students are kind of starved right now. They want to be out with their friends and whether it's band or being on a sports team, our numbers are up in every sports, with every sports team. Up in golf and up in soccer as well. And our coaches are doing a fantastic job of monitoring. Daily charting and the temperature checks and following the protocols in place. They've done a fantastic job with that. But we'll see what the league has to say. And also, again, the OHSAA is going to do a local control. I was on the phone with them yesterday. So they're going to let parts of the state function that can function and different parts of the state that can't, won't. We know the Cleveland city schools has already canceled all their fall sports. That was two of our football games, I think a volleyball game we had with the Cleveland city school. And I'm not sure what else, we might've had a soccer game with them. So those are automatically off the schedule. We may end up with just a league schedule and not venture out into an independent schedule once all sudden. And that was one of the topics for consideration. Some other operational things I want to mention as well. I talked about the buses being sanitized every night. My bus, the bus drivers will be in masks as well. I already mentioned that we do clean every classroom every night. We empty the trash every night in every room. And we're going to add sanitation to that as well as the open areas, the hallways will be. We've got machines that do the hallways that be stepped up. We use an all EPA approved cleansing and make sure that they're COVID-19 approved as well. We're going to clean throughout the day. It may mean us moving some additional staff around. As I said, we added 100 additional hand sanitizing stations throughout the building to accommodate some of that as well, to make sure that the kids have access to that as well. A lot of moving parts to this. We'll define a lot more parts of this next Tuesday and Wednesday when we meet as an administrative team to hammer out and we'll get that information out through email to parents. So parents, if you haven't been getting Tom Talks, if you haven't been getting the reminds, please, thatinfo@cuyhds, send your correct email address to that. We'll make sure it gets entered. Somebody also had asked a question about the one call now that their account had been eliminated. It hadn't been eliminated, we're going away from one call now, we're moving to remind, which is a more, has more options for us to, for teachers and parent and administrative contact in it. So nobody's being dropped off of our system right now. There, one system's being unloaded, another system's being loaded on for us to use so we can get more communication and easier communication with the parents out there. And that's a whole bunch of stuff and I know there's still more questions. Board members, do you have questions for me right now?
I have one, Tom. Okay, and I think you had said this, but I think, I know that I've heard it from community members and I've read it in a couple of the emails. So I want to make sure I'm hearing this correct. If a student who is in class tests positive or a staff member, those that are, the county health department is saying that those that have been close to that person for 10 minutes should quarantine for 14 days.
Correct.
Thinking that would mean, because I think that this is a reality kind of thing. Like I've been telling people, it's not if, it's when. You know, if numbers keep on increasing, I'm sure we're going to have cases here in our bubble that are, you know, people that are affected. So does that mean that the entire class would be quarantined for 14 days?
The way I read that, yes. That would be, the way I read the recommendation from the county health department, yes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Evans, I would like to bring up one item. And I apologize for not talking to you about this thought earlier today when we spoke. But you know, it didn't come up until more recently since we had that conversation this afternoon. I'm a little concerned about, first of all, I want to commend you for putting this plan together, you and the rest of the staff. It's an excellent plan. But I'm a little concerned about making it a formal board resolution. And the reason I say that is if we approve it and three days into the school year, you realize that something significant has to be changed, does that mean we have to call a board meeting and approve a change to this plan before it can be implemented? And that concerns me, having this as a resolution that the board approves. Does that make sense? Am I making sense?
Yeah, I see where you're coming from on this, but I would say, my answer to that would be no. I think we've kind of purposely left some things with some flexibility in it so that we could make changes. I certainly would talk to the board before I made any changes. In other words, I'd be on the phone with all five of you to say, listen, this happened, here's what we need to do or this has come up, so we need to make this change. And I don't think that the board approval of this plan would preclude us from doing that. I still believe that we'd have the flexibility to make the changes as we need it. And yeah, I'm going to keep everybody in the loop on that thing. I'm not going to arbitrarily make the changes to it without consulting the board.
Right, yeah, I guess I assumed you would probably do that anyway. I just wanted to make sure we weren't getting ourselves into some sort of violation of ORC regulations or some legal issue if we approve this plan. We have to take something out or put something in that's completely different or whatever. I don't want to get in your way.
If we adopted it as a policy, we would be tied to it. And we're just, we're approving a plan presented by the superintendent right now, that's a different level. If it were a policy, I would say yes, we would have to have a board approval to change a policy.
Because this is more looked like as a guideline or a framework. It's basically, it can't be a static document because it could be changing every hour, every day, every week, every month, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps me a lot, thank you.
And you have to, there's not a whole lot of specific things that would change written in it, you know, like attendance, you know, we're going to be washing our hands and, you know, a lot of it really based around safety that are kind of good practices without a pandemic.
Correct, you know, it's
I just don't want to tie the hands of the administration. That's all I'm trying to say. I want to make sure I'm not tying anybody's hands or getting in the way of doing the right thing for the district.
No, for adopted policy, we would have to have a board approval to change a policy. This is, this is a plan that has
Right, and I guess I wasn't making that distinction, my thinking, I wasn't making that distinction, so, thank you.
I had a couple of questions that had to do with staffing. Are, we have, we feel we're adequate with our staff in terms of nurse? Do we have just one nurse on staff daily to cover all three schools?
We've got a nurse and a nurse's assistant. And one of the things that we knew actually going into this year that we had to adjust some schedules. So because we're using, we needed some overlap times. I know Mrs. Houchen has already met with Mr. Young to talk about what we have to do to adjust those schedules to make sure that we have coverage all the time. We are actually, nursing costs are less this year because one of our students that had a dedicated nurse graduated. So remember when we approved that plan that we are nursing, we're actually one less nursing assistant with our contracted company. But that assistant was designated to one student all day. We, again, the nurse and nurse's assistant do a fantastic job for us. And I know that Mrs. Houchen and Mr. Young were already adjusting the schedules to make sure that we had coverage in both buildings because of this. An additional staffing question may be, we may look for some part-time additional cleaning staff.
That's what I was going to ask you.
Sanitation. My thought after talking with Mr. Zerbola is that our cleaning staff would come through and clean as they always clean. And then the sanitation group would follow them and sanitize the rooms after they've been cleaned. And that would require some additional staffing to do that. And quite honestly, with us stepping up the protocols during the day, we might need somebody during the day with our maintenance and custodial we might need somebody during the day with our maintenance and custodial staff. Once we take a look at all that, we're going to try to get done cleaning-wise throughout the day on a regular basis. Cafeteria tables, door handles, restrooms, probably three times during the day, those types of things. Make sure that we have enough staff to get those things done on a regular basis.
And what about CVCC? Does, do they have their own back-to-school plan, I would assume?
Yes, they do. Great question, Mrs. Etter. And Mr. Mangus has sent that out. They're, they're also going to have online and option and in-school. We know that CVCC has a lot of hands-on activities. A lot of their activities take place in lab areas. So they, they have bigger spaces and can social distance a little bit more readily than we can and some things. But a lot of their stuff is skill-based. So students have to come into the building and demonstrate certain skill levels for certification. So I know they've spent some time on that. But they, they've, they've been sending, they've sent their plan out. I know Mr. Sichaki sent me the plan initially. Mr. Mangas sent me some adjustments to that. And I, I think they're communicating directly with the parents of students that are signed up for CVCC. Mrs. Schukert's nodding her head. I know her son's heading over there this year to tell them what that plan is and what their options are.
And of course, the transportation, they'll be doing the same thing they would for our own students to just go back and forth to school.
Yeah, we, we've always split transportation with independence. In other words, we, we, we take the kids in the morning in independence, then takes the afternoon group over. I'm going to double check with Kathy Toplits on our numbers. I, I think space-wise, we can go one proceed on that and not have any issues with that. You know, we do a little cooperative thing with, with, with independence on that. It's, that's worked out for us for many, many years, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we, we provide the, the sanitation at the Career Center.
Correct.
So, Mr. Evans, would you anticipate that we as a board would be seeing revisions to this plan as it develops? Or do you view this as kind of a one-time event that you would notify us or advise us of material changes?
Well, you're going to see a great deal of additions, especially after we meet as an administrative team next week with more clearly defined protocols for in-the-building, what's going to take place in that. We'll, we'll do that with the, as our team gets together. I know Mrs. Houchen's on the line, and she's already had team meetings with her teachers. And a lot of concerns have been brought up that we need to work our way through. I know Mr. Janatovich has, has jumped on early and met with team leaders. And there's concerns from the teachers that we need to make sure that we iron out and have in place to make sure that we're taking everybody's safety into consideration as well. Not, not only our students' safety, but our staff's safety as well. Of primary importance to us entering this as well. So a lot, a lot of things to be worked out, the nuts and bolts of it. But this is the framework of it that, that you're seeing right now.
Okay. Thank you very much for an excellent, for an excellent program and presentation.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion among the people that are on the, the meeting this evening?
Just one last reminder to the, to parents that are, again, questions to info@cuyhts. My email directly is tevins@cuyhts. I've been pretty good about responding to emails. I think I've gotten back to almost everybody that sent me an email on that. And also, next week, you're going to see a couple of things. You're going to see a survey, parents, please complete the survey in its entirety. And also, we're going to have additional Zoom meetings after we've met with the administrative team with some more details on what, what a day in the building is going to look like for your students at that time. Thank you.
Very good. If there's no further discussion on this item, could we proceed to a vote then?
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mr. Sichaki.
Hi.
Mr. Damon.
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0. Moving on, if Mr. Evans' voice holds out, to additional superintendent's comments.
Just to reiterate, you know, it's constantly changing. And, and we're, we're staying up, we're trying to stay on top of the best we can. And meeting with the health department every week, meeting with, I'm meeting with the state superintendents. And there's usually about 150 superintendents on that. I meet with the first ring superintendents, there are 17 of us involved in that. I meet with the Greater Cleveland Group of Superintendents, there's about 60 superintendents in that. So we're constantly talking, I met with the, the league superintendents today. So we're constantly talking about plans. We're constantly trying to prevent, present a unified front. We know that multiple plans cause multiple headaches. And, and certainly I've had a lot of people say, do you know that this district is doing this? Yeah, and I've had a lot of plans sent to me. And believe me, we're looking at everything because we'll use anything and everything that we can to make this work the best way possible for our students and our families and our teachers. That's, that's primary importance to us. So thank you for your patience with this. And, and again, this is going to be a process. And it's going to, and it's going to have its ups and downs. And I understand completely because I have emails that came in today that said, why are we not coming back at 100%? And I've got emails that have said, why are we not starting remotely? So I know that we're all across the board on this feeling-wise and parent-wise. And we're going to do the best, best possible with it.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Moving on to board business resolutions, there's two items that the board has to consider this evening. One is, Mr. Evans, you're more familiar with this. Do you want to read the 14B?
This is to approve my request to my membership in the Greater Cleveland School Superintendent's Association for the 2021 school year. That's $100 membership to that organization. And that's the group of 60 that I was, was, I had just mentioned that we, we meet every, we, we get together online every Friday. And that's actually who the health commissioner has, has stepped into those meetings with us. So that's, that's been very, very beneficial to me and the district. We're getting, we get a lot out of that membership.
Very good. And then 14B, is that Mr. Mucho's item or Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I can talk on this one.
Oh, go ahead.
Sure. This is a motion to approve a resolution on the terms of representation for filing a proof of claim against Purdue Pharma and the bankruptcy and/or other litigation, including any class action. So from working with our school district legal counsel, they recommended that we proceed in this manner, authorizing the filing of this bankruptcy proof of claim. So we have the resolution here, which is resolved effective July 20th, 2020. And the Board of Education engages the law firms of Brennan, Manna, and Diamond, and Ennis Britton, which is our school district legal counsel, to file a proof of claim on behalf of the district in the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy in the United States Bankruptcy Court, Southern District of New York. And it talks about the actual lawsuit case. I have four attachments here. This is the resolution provided by our school district legal counsel. This, one down here, this email just talks about the information from this law from Brennan, Manna, and Diamond. And their fee overall will be 20% of any funds actually received from the Purdue Pharma bankruptcy and/or any other class action. So there's no cost out of pocket right now to us. But how it works is their fee, it will be 20% of anything actually received from this bankruptcy proceeding. I went online and found a good article here that talks about what this all deals with. And just the first paragraph talks about public school districts nationwide have until July 30th, 2020, to file a proof of claim in the bankruptcy proceeding of Purdue Pharma, manufacturer of OxyContin, for its alleged role in opioid epidemic. Submitting a claim may allow school districts to receive money due to the toll that addiction has taken on schools. I also, in this last attachment here, got an estimate of potentially what our amount would be. And it's $2,511,811. And it talks about how this estimate came to be. And it was from the website that dealt with Purdue proof of claims estimates.
So, Mr. Evans, I just wanted to thank you because you, you jumped on this pretty quickly and, and noted the deadline, which is, I believe, tomorrow. And so we, you got it on this evening's agenda and brought everybody up to speed as to what it's all about in a short period of time. So thank you for doing that. And, you know, I look forward to certainly acting on this particular resolution.
Yep.
Okay, is, may I have a motion then for approval of the board's consent agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Sichaki moves.
Second.
Mr. Damon second. Any further discussion? We've had discussion already. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, could we move to a vote then?
Mr. Sichaki.
Aye.
Mr. Damon.
Aye.
Mrs. Etter.
Aye.
Mrs. Schukert.
Aye.
Mr. Dobbins.
Aye. The motion passes 5-0. Moving forward to item 16, board committee reports and comments. Is there anything that the board members would like to bring forth this evening?
I just want to say a big thank you to everyone that's working so hard to get our students back in the classroom, back to learning online, if it will be. But thank you to everybody who's working so hard to make this happen and that we all, that the students and staff will all be working in a safe environment. And also, thank you to Mr. Mucho for getting us in on this Purdue Pharma lawsuit.
And I'm just going to chime in a little bit too. I, I, I want to thank the parents that stepped up and served on committees this summer, as well as board members and, and staff that gave up their summertime to, to help us get some input on developing a plan and putting that together. And, and also the administrative team, a lot of them foregoed some family things this summer to make sure that we put some things in place. And, and as I said before, you know, the, the current ones really done a phenomenal job. And then Mr. Young and Mr. Janatovich kind of jumping on board before they even officially employees of the school district and helping us work through these things. And I've got great confidence that, that, that we'll get through this in, in great shape and, and we'll do what's best for our kids. And, and we do what Caga Hikes always tends to do. When, 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 when things get a little bit dicey, we step up to the plate and do a good job of things. And I have no doubt that that'll happen this time as well.
And, Mr. Evans, I'd like to just actually add a couple of other things too as well. I mean, I'd like to thank you and, and Mr. Young for your leadership to this process. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not an easy, we're in unprecedented times. And actually, you know, things are changing constantly. And it's, 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 it's some of the, the tireless efforts that, that you both have put in as the worker to get us to this point as well. So there's a lot of effort, it takes a huge, you know, huge gathering of people to actually make this all work. And actually, you guys are really great leaders in this process. So thank you very much. You're always keeping an eye that the number one priority is basically the safety of the students and, and your, your staff and, and everything in the district as well. So with that, with that in mind, so thank you. I think it's a very solid plan.
Thanks.
All right. I just want to say, it stinks going last in this because everyone takes all of your ideas. Thank you, Mr. Mucho and your department for getting us completely on the new accounting system, the state software redesign, how exciting that we're, we're working. Thank you, admin team. And you, Mr. Evans, I can't say enough about your leadership and just your countless hours that you put forth to make this district what it is, you know? And definitely to, to Mr. Young for, and Mr. Janatovich jumping on board without an, you know, officially being, you know, starting. So I hope that you guys are happy with your decision of being here. And Mrs. Houchen, you know, you've got our, our tiniest, most youngest cargo that you're thinking of. And so thank you. I, I know you guys are working tirelessly to, to really do what's best for kids. I want to thank the parents who have reached out and emailed. I, I know, you know, I hope that they continue to do that because we are taking it seriously. The board members are seeing it. And it's important for us to know kind of where your thoughts are at and if there are any questions. So thank you to those people that are doing that. And I just really want to say, like, I'm empathizing with parents right now because I am a parent of three full-aged kids. And, you know, I think it's hard to make those, the decisions for what, what you're going to do. But just know whatever decision you make is the right one for your children and your family. And it's okay. We're going to get through this time. That's all I've got.
That's, that's plenty. Thank you, Mrs. Schukert. Moving on to future agenda items, is there any future agenda items that the board would like to discuss right now? Okay, then we will move on to informational items. It should be noted that the board members have received their agendas several days prior to the actual meeting. Thus, they've had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions, et cetera. Upcoming regular meetings, upcoming regular board meetings are scheduled at Wednesdays at 7:00 p.m. on August 12th, August 26th, September 9th, and September 23rd. With that, I would ask for a motion for adjournment. A move. Mr. Damon moves.
Second.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hear five ayes, no nays.